Council Ways and Means Committee, we're back in session for Council Bill 23-0381, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2024. I'm Mayor Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joined to me on my left, Council President Nick Mosby, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District; to my right, Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District; Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee; to my immediate right is Marguerite Curran. We have staff from both Mayor Brandon Scott and Council President Nick Mosby's offices. Couple of quick ground rules before we begin. One, if you have a mobile device, please turn it to silent or vibrate or some other type of setting that does not make noise. If you are speaking, for the folks that are sitting at the front desks, you'll see this device in front of you. There are two buttons. If you click the button on your right, all your rings light up red here. When you're red, that means you're good to talk. Got to follow my own rules here, right? When you're done talking, please turn off the microphone. These microphones are very sensitive and will catch a lot. For tonight's hearing, when you are testifying, please address your testimony to the council. This historically has never been a problem with the Fire Department or OEM, but we are not addressing our testimony this evening to the citizens of Baltimore, or to the public, or to the media. This is a conversation directly between the committee and the department to discuss your progress in fiscal year '23 and your proposed plans for 2024. So with that, everyone good? And for the first portion of this hearing, we're going to be focusing on OEM, I believe? Yes. So what we're going to do, Chief, I'm going to start with you, and if you want to do a brief intro for OEM and then turn it over to Chief Wallace, if that's appropriate. And then when we get to Fire, Chief, I'm going to ask you to introduce all of your senior staff that are with you this evening, and then we'll run through the full-length Fire presentation. Is everyone good with that? All right, so with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Stewart to turn it over to Chief Wallace. And Chief, I think you only have one slide, correct, for OEM? Excellent. And we also have been joined by Deputy Mayor for Public Safety, Tony Barksdale. Thank you for being here, Deputy Mayor, and Assistant Deputy Mayor Sam Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chair, Council members. I'm Dante Stourd, Acting Fire Chief, City of Baltimore. And first, we'd like to thank you all for allowing us to have this opportunity to present our fiscal year '24 budget. And we're going to start off with the Office of Emergency Management, which falls under the Fire Department, and overseen by Deputy Chief James Wallace, who's going to do his presentation.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'm Deputy Chief Wallace, on behalf of the Office of Emergency Management, in your budget book known as Service Number 608, and the slide is posted. For service description, this service provides the city, or I'm sorry, prepares the city for major man-made and natural disasters such as hurricanes, power outages, hazardous materials incidents, and acts of terrorism, just to name a few. This service also includes a 24-hour-a-day, 7-day-a-week field response capability and citywide coordination for incidents and events that are high-risk, prolonged, widespread, or complex. And Sir, that's the conclusion of that slide. I'm happy to take any questions from either yourself or the committee.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. No questions for me, just provide some quick feedback. Working with your office has been, has been nothing short of a pleasure. Everyone on your team has been fantastic to work with, had an opportunity to see you guys up close and personal, helping to coordinate emergency responses, and can say I'm nothing short than impressed with your guys' performance. Appreciate your leadership and everything that you all do every single day. Mr. President, Councilman Schleifer.
I'm good. Just echo what the Chairman said. Thank you very much for everything that you do. You've always been responsive in my district, and hopefully, we never have to see you in the district, but when we do, we appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Chief Wallace. Always a pleasure, always great to have a chance to talk with you and learn from you, of course, in the committee. I've got just one question. So the recommended budget includes $83,000 in the general fund to support the purchase of a mass public notification system that'll be used citywide to communicate with residents during emergencies. I know this is an issue that we've talked about in the past. Can you tell me a little bit about how this is different from what we currently do and what to expect with the new system?
I can, and thank you for the question. So we're currently transitioning from a program known as Code RED. You see it pop up on your phone call or ID as Be More Alert, transitioning to a platform known as Everbridge. Everbridge is being integrated into different emergency management offices throughout the state of Maryland, most notable through the Maryland Department of the Environment. They have the ability to import more data into their system, as well as being able to actually send out alerts via multiple means, including cellphone, voice, text, VoIP. That platform was used this past weekend, and we put out, and bear with me for a second, I'll give you a number. So there were close to, there were over 500,000 alerts sent out within 15 minutes this past week. We did not have that capability prior, so we're very excited about it. We do currently still use the Code RED system. There is an overlap in service right now. However, the Code RED contract will expire effective June 1st, and Everbridge will become the platform.
That's great. As far as I notice, you're talking about the youth curfew. Is that what we sent out, or did we use it for something else?
I'm sorry, sir, I missed part of that.
You said we recently used it. What did we use it for?
That was used as a platform for curfew notification.
Perfect, exactly. Because I got a bunch of those. I got emails, texts.
Yes, sir.
Phone calls. My mom called me. It's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question. I also want to echo the, my colleagues on the amazing work that the office is doing, of course, and, you know, the work that the office has been doing is not just about responding to emergencies, but also, like, you have a plan, and that's been super helpful. I had a question about, one of the performance measures is around planning and working with stakeholders for planning. We have a number of Spanish speakers, obviously, in our city now, and it's growing, so how many people in your office speak Spanish?
I don't know how many speak Spanish, ma'am, but I can certainly provide you that information.
Do you have a liaison, at least, that would work with the community in terms of if we're doing emergency planning in a certain area of the city where they are?
We do. So our Preparedness Section Chief, Michelle Smith, is, you know, she's all over the place, and whenever we have those initiatives, she is forefront with that stuff.
So she would be the one who would manage whether or not there's somebody that would be on staff, or if you needed a translator?
Coordinating acquisition of one in absence, yes.
Okay. Well, we're encouraging all of the agencies to make sure that they're hiring people who also speak Spanish, because we do have, you know, that, the community is growing, so that interaction is extremely, extremely important. So I appreciate that. Thank you. And let me just see here. I think that was really it. Again, thank you very much for all that you're doing. Thanks.
Councilman Burnett, anything for OEM specific?
You're doing a great job. I love OEM.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Colleagues, Councilman Conway?
Just one more, and kind of going through the performance metrics, there's one on here that we haven't had any headway in the last couple of years, and that's the number of new community members trained in a community emergency response program. We seem to consistently set a target for 15, but have had zero. I'm guessing that the pandemic has had something to do with that, but I'm curious what we're doing to make sure we meet that target in the future.
Yes, sir. So thank you for that, and you're absolutely right. Initially, the pandemic was a factor, but it's no longer an excuse. Since December, they've been able to onboard five community emergency response personnel, but there's also a process. We don't just ask people to sign up and we deploy them into the street. There's a structured process, which they're required to go through, what are known as independent study courses offered by FEMA, so there's a couple of those there. There's also Basic First Aid and the American Heart Association's CPR course. Those are the initials. They have finished, that group of five has finished. I would also add that they have recently been able to email all the community groups within Council Districts 1 and 2, and they have five community association meetings that they're going to recruit. So that trend is upward, but it's going to be a slow trend. My goal is to be able to use CERT team members for Blue Sky events, so 4th of July, the Bike Race, the Running Fest, and things like that, and work our way towards emergency response. I don't foresee them operating in a disaster zone or on an emergency event in the near future, but I do foresee them, you know, public-facing and supporting some of the Fire Department events with people in the very near future.
Interesting. So just to clarify, because I didn't realize this, you're saying that the folks trained here are actually used in some operations for events and otherwise?
CERT teams historically have been. They've been what's known as a follow-on force behind emergency responders. In our conversations with the Law Department, there's some apprehension around that, being, you know, putting them out in disaster zones where maybe they don't have the same level of training and familiarity as an emergency responder, and some liability concerns. So we continue to work through that, but that's not a barrier to the program. We're going to, we're going to be able to use them in large events as extra sets of eyes and, you know, community liaisons, if you will, and we're very much looking forward to that.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions for OEM?
I do have one more.
Councilman Burnett?
So I did have a question. Is the community outreach in your shop, like outreach and training?
We have community outreach through our Preparedness Section.
Okay, but the general, like, community education work is at OEM or Fire? Or just the Department?
I think it's predominantly Fire, but we do share in, you know, that outreach element.
Okay. So is there, and I guess both can answer, a strategic plan to build capacity within the unit, and I'm referring to the Service Number 610. It seems stagnant and unable to have reached the actials from 2019, given what seems to be sort of a low capacity on this, in that effort, that type of work. Can you speak to, I guess, efforts to grow capacity for more community education and outreach in your shop? And I guess we can hold the other part of that question for Fire at Large.
So I can speak to Service 608 and what we've been able to do there, and it's through the community events, it's through messaging, that we get our message out regarding preparedness to the community. The CERT element itself is obviously part of that, but that's more focused on groups that actually want to volunteer their services during specific events. But we're at all the, all the community events that we're requested to be at, we go out of our way to be there, and I think whether we engage one person or 100 people, our message of preparedness remains the same across the board, but that's how we educate. We educate specifically to emergency preparedness, kits in the home, kits in vehicles, things like that.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions for OEM? Deputy Chief, thank you for the outstanding work, as always. Acting Chief Stewart, if you're amenable, these guys are excused, as far as we're concerned.
Yes, sir.
Have a good evening. Acting Chief, if you could run through and introduce all your folks that are here this evening that are going to be testifying, including their position title, and then you have, I think, 16-page deck? How much time do you anticipate needing to get through the deck? Take it away. Mike, Mike?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would like to start off with my immediate executive staff. To my left, you have Assistant Chief of Community Risk Reduction and Support Services, Christopher Case. Behind me, Assistant Chief of Safety and Member Services, Charles Savella. Directly behind me is Acting Assistant Chief of Operations, Arlen Doles. To his right is Assistant Chief of EMS, James Matts. Stay on my side. To our immediate right, we have our Director of Fiscal Service, Mr. James Fisher. To his right is Captain Wayne Robinson of Safety and Member Services Office. I have newly reconnected Director of Communications, Mr. Kevin Cartwright. I have Deputy Chief John Idt, he's Shift Commander of A Shift. Have Assistant Executive, Executive Assistant Chief Kensington White III. All right. Going to stay on this side. Have Director of 911, Tanya Reddick. Next to her is Deputy Chief Kailila Gancia of Compliance and Performance Standards. We have Kim Washington, our Equity Officer. And we're going to transition to the other side of the room, starting in the first row. Have our Director of Training, Deputy Chief Laura Shallow. We have Battalion Chief of Communications, Battalion Chief Cassandra Chase. We have our Director of IT and Communications, Director Shante Hart. Next row, we have our Acting Deputy Chief of the Fire Marshals, Sean Eames. We have Deputy Chief Thomas Tosh, the Shift Commander of C Shift. Next to him is Battalion Chief Glenn Kukuka, he's Acting, he's Acting Shift Commander on B Shift. Next to me, we have Deputy Chief Carl Knight of Safety Office. We have Deputy Chief Ronald J. Hudgens Jr., the Director of our Special Operations, as well as Shift Commander of Delta Shift. And in the back, we have Deputy Chief Jason Goodwin, who's our Deputy Chief of Logistics, and Deputy Chief Delanda Johnson of EMS. Okay, so we're going to go with Agency Overview for our agency mission. The City Charter establishes Bottom City Fire Department and its roles and responsibilities are specified in the City Code. Its primary and most visible functions are to prevent suppressed fires and to provide emergency medical services. The Department also provides rescue, emergency communications, fire prevention, community outreach, education, and other services. Although response to emergencies is the focus of most of the Department's resources, increased prevention efforts, including residential fire safety training, Mobile Safety Center, Youth Fire and Life Safety Program, early childhood education, and free detective programs have been extremely effective in controlling the incidence of fires and related injuries. So our fiscal 2024 goals, second full year of realizing additional revenue through the Emergency Services Payment Program that provides additional reimbursement to the city when emergency medical service units transport patients who are eligible for Medicaid. Fiscal 2024 budget assumes $40 million from this program, consistent with the assumption of the fiscal 2023 budget. Increasing funding to create four safety officer positions, which are being created in response to the Stricker Street Fire Report. These positions are meant to provide safety support to, for BCFD to respond to incidents. To touch on that, so basically, we created an additional safety officer per shift, so we would have one safety officer for each side of town, in case we had multiple incidents coming in at one time. And here's the breakdown of all the services. Service 600 is Administration. Service 602 is Fire Suppression and Emergency Rescue. We just spoke on 608, Emergency Management. Service 609 is Emergency Medical Services. Service 610, Fire and Emergency Community Outreach. Service 611 is Fire Code Enforcement. Service 612 is Fire Investigation. Service 613, Fire Facilities Maintenance and Replacement. Service 614, Fire Communications and Dispatch, and Service 615, Fire Training and Education. So we can start off with Administration. Fiscal budget for Administration is going to be $13,155,570. And this service provides agency-wide executive leadership and direct support functions, including formulation of the budget, fiscal operations, procurement, accounting, information technology, human resources, workers' compensation expenses, and general administrative services. Do we have any questions on this slide?
No, and Chief, you can just hit the, hit the highlights. Yeah, we're, we got them in front of us, so.
Okay, no problem.
All right.
All right, so Fire Suppression and Emergency Response, again, that fiscal year '24 budget is $186,587.77, and the recommended budget increased over time in this service by $1.8 million to reflect current trends, EOL staffing situation, and just overall members leaving and going to other places. I just spoke on Emergency Management. Okay, Emergency Medical Services. So our fiscal 20-year, fiscal '24 budget is going to be $62,179,462, and the recommended budget includes funding for the Population Health 911 Nurse Triage Program. Population Health activity will consolidate current mobile integrated health programs that serve the City of Baltimore. Basically, this is a way of supplementing our call volume, so that way our EMS units are not overloaded. Just trying to find different approaches to medical care, so that we don't get the same repeat offenders who will keep calling 911 five times a week. Just get them a different alternative to, as opposed to going to the ER and sitting in a wheelchair and also tying up our units. So Fire Community, Fire and Emergency Community Outreach, $466,036. The service, basically, this service includes us going out, hands-on CPR training, setting up booths at events, and we plan on expanding this now that we have Chief White and Community Outreach. He's one of the first chiefs to start off our Community Outreach Program, so we're looking at enhancing that aspect of the department, getting back out into the community on a broader scale now that we're post-pandemic. Fire Code Enforcement, this budget, $6,654,960, and this basically covers our Fire Marshal's Office, the permitting process, plans review. We have a lot of businesses going up, and we're just trying to streamline that event, make it possible for our business partners to succeed with their plans in operating within the city. We did some reorganizing to the Fire Marshal's Office, so we're looking to see the results of that reorganization, and just keep us moving in the right direction. Fire Investigation, that also falls under the USP, fires under the Fire Marshal. The recommended budget is, we want to maintain the current level, which is four investigators, one investigator per shift. Fire Facilities Maintenance and Replacement. Of course, as you see, this budget is $28,441. We're in the process of renovating our agent stations. We have some well over 100 years old. We had a plan to redo two stations, far as tear down and rebuild, but the one was designated as historical site, and we're going through the hearing process for the second location that we were going to try to do a new build. So in the meantime, we have six stations that we're going to start the renovating process. Those units will be relocated to other parts of the city while those stations are being renovated. We just have received the plans, and we're planning on moving in that within the next two weeks, and looking at a five-to-six-month turnaround for these rebuilds. So we're really looking forward to this, to this process, and hopefully, we'll get very aged stations renovated up to today's standards. Fire Communications and Dispatch. So we're in the process of upgrading our station alerting devices, so that way our members are alerted in a timely fashion to respond quicker. Also, we have new technology coming onboard, artificial intelligence far as call-taking, and just, just looking forward to increasing our services to the public when they make, when they call 911 and get the information out to our units as quickly as best possible. Fire Training and Education, looking at $5 million for this budget. Since my Fire Training and Education is going to cover different aspects, we have a high school program that we're trying to get established. We have 10 members signed up to be mentors with this program. Also, we're planning on the 15 high school students in cadip, positions, enhancing that. Also, we are training far as our members themselves to make them better prepared. We have some, a lot of realistic training going on at the academy. We have members reach out, go out to Fire Department New York City to get some special operations training, as well as some basic firefighter training. They came back, we made props to enhance our training, make it more realistic to what our members encounter in the field, especially in the aspects of vacant dwellings and the dangers that they could possibly come across. Okay, and I believe that's it for our slides, and we'll be happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. Service 609, Emergency Medical Services, there's an increase in FTEs for, on the civilian side of '22, from 6 to 28. Can you talk a little bit about what that increase is for?
So that increase would be more so for the Population Health Program, hiring nurse practitioners to answer calls with 911. Again, try to offload the workload on our members and just, and provide better service emergency medical-wise for the citizens, and I can have Assistant Chief Matt speak more on that, since he created the program and he's spearheading that effort.
And Chief Matts, can I just jump in really quick? Chairman Costello, I just, in looking at the civilian positions and the detail there, I can tell that there's an error in the budget document, so I would just like to call out that the EMT classification that has 16 positions, and then the paramedic that had four.
What page you on, Laura?
I'm on page 139. Those two classifications should have been identified as sworn, but are incorrectly categorized as civilian within the document.
You're on 139, in the first table?
In the, yep. So if you go down to the sort of middle portion of the page where you see the In the, yep, so if you go down to the sort of middle portion of the page where you see the civilian positions by fund and under general fund, classification sixty-two, seven, ten, EMT, emergency medical technician, and then sixty-two, seven, one, twelve, paramedic. Those, those are incorrectly categorized as civilian and should be sworn. So that's a mistake in that, in that table.
Oh, so the increase is really to the, in the, in the top table, it's really to the sworn, not to the civilian?
Yes, so those, those two classifications represent twenty of the twenty-eight newly created positions that were created mid-year in fiscal twenty-three. The, the twenty-three budget had set aside some of the new ESPP revenue for the fire department to create additional, additional units and additional staffing. And so those positions were created, even though the funding was in the twenty-three budget, the positions got created after, after adoption. And so we're seeing the counts show up in twenty-four for the first time.
So just to summarize, those are sworn positions?
That is correct, so that's a mistake on our end.
Got it. Were you going to tell me if I didn't catch that? I'm, Laura, you're fantastic, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. It's been a long day.
That's a good catch, so, so my apologies on that mistake.
No, no need to apologize at all. Can you talk a little bit about the, the positions?
Sure, certainly. First, I'd like to say good evening, Chairman Costello, President Mosby, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. For the record, my name is James Matts, I'm the Assistant Chief of EMS. We were lucky enough to identify a new revenue source last year called, it's a supplemental payment program, emergency service supplemental payment program. And it let the city realize a significant amount of money, money that we leave on the table with every transport we do. We're actually able to bill back the federal government for their share of what we, we lose every time we take a Medicaid response. And it's substantial. We were able to generate some additional QA positions, quality assurance, quality improvement positions. They gave us three of those. What that did is that let us have a lieutenant on every, all four shifts that can be proactive instead of reactive with checking our patient care, our patient outcomes. We were able to generate two additional training positions to help with the additional personnel. We also were able to leverage additional personnel in the population health. Where we're going to outsource, we're basically trying to take the right patient or the right resource instead of continually taking people to the hospital. And that's some of the positions we use for that. We also had positions that she was, that, that the fiscal was speaking about regarding two additional AMBOs worth of staffing. We're currently in the process of staffing those AMBOs.
Great, thank you very much, really appreciate it. Mr. President?
You know, obviously, the fire department dealt with a great loss last year. Coming out of the Stricker Street report, I guess, when you look at the line item, things in the budget as it relates to corrective actions, as it relates to personnel, as it relates to gear, is there anything that you want to specifically point out to the council that's really important? And, and things that we should be extremely mindful of?
Thank you for that, Mr. President. Again, the overall, overall mission of the department after Stricker Street tragedy was to improve safety and accountability for our members. We've saved the four safety officers. And we've, we're currently in the process of trying additional pilots to better enhance that goal for us. Particularly a battalion tech position is a current pilot that we're working on. It's been in place since January, so we are trying that out, seeing the impact that has, enhancing it as we go along with computer programs such as the Adashi program. And for future day, we want to take that information that we've gathered from that program and see how that can better, I guess, better enhance our ability to do our job more safely. We've already created policies to enhance our response to maydays. So far, we've had one actual incident where we actually dispatched a mayday assignment. And prior to those units even getting out the door, the situation was abated by the members on the scene. And it really wasn't a true mayday, but just being able to have that resource at hand and just seeing how it actually operated when we dispatched was, was a good thing to take data from. Just our overall goal of moving forward, trying to do things with, with training, the training that we have enhanced at the academy. Our members going out to special ops training. We've enhanced our special operations program tremendously from that day. Members have been going to Richmond, again FDNY, taking structural collapse classes in Texas. Back in March, we had a drill up on Higgo Avenue where we had all of the fire departments from Washington DC, Delaware, Newark, Delaware, Baltimore County, Howard County, Anaronto County, all their special ops came into the city to train with our folks because of the training enhancements that we've been doing in the past year. And also, we're on pace to possibly certify one hundred new technicians in hazmat, special ops, swift water rescue, collapse, structural collapse. These are classes that we haven't had for quite some time. So we've definitely taken the wheel and kind of ran forward with just bettering our members and just exposing them to more things and outside the region.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilman Schleifer, and then Councilman Burnett.
Thank you. And so along on the same lines when we're talking about the Stricker Street report, there was recommendations about certain new positions like battalion technicians. I was looking through the, the budget, I didn't see any of those new positions in the budget. Are they in here under something else?
No, sir, we, we got the, we got the safety officer, the four safety officers. And again, battalion tech is still a pilot program. And once we get all the data we can get from that, then we can move forward with permanent fundings for those positions. The plan is right now just to expose the lower-level members of the department to gain that insight of managing a fire ground that you normally won't get until you reach the senior captain with battalion chief level. And so far, the feedback from the members who have been doing the program has been very good feedback. They have that, they have that mindset of, okay, I see the big picture now as opposed to, and I was just as guilty when I was a lieutenant. You see a building, you see fire, all right, we're going to try going and get it. Now they have that, okay, let me sit back, see what the battalion chief don't see so I can help them out and just take in the whole entire scene, so.
Gotcha, so if, if the positions aren't budgeted, you mentioned about a pilot program, I wasn't familiar with that. So how is that pilot program being funded right now?
So back, so basically, we are detailing lieutenants and some senior firefighters to those positions and just, just backfill their spots with members on impact over time.
Oh, so it's overtime, gotcha. And then I guess my next question was just going back to the EMT stuff. I know there was a little bit of questions about the positions, what's sworn, what's not. Can you, can you just tell me how many vacancies you have in, in the EMT EMS positions? And how many additional positions there are in this year's budget for that?
So for EMS, the latest numbers that I have were vacant, were sixty-one vacancies. I'll give you the exact breakdown in just one second.
Sixty-one out of how many, how many positions are there in that?
Out of three hundred and. Out of three hundred and eighty-three.
Out of three eighty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And are, are there new, so of these other positions that we're talking about, are any of those new positions for EMS? The sworn?
Yes, sir. Some of those are sworn for quality assurance, some are sworn for EMS training. Sixteen are going to be EMTs. We also have additional six officers, four community paramedics that'll be going on the street, working day-to-day outreach to the, to the public, trying to outreach for some of those different services that I was talking to you about a little bit earlier. You know, unfortunately, we rank as one of the busiest, if not the busiest, one of the top three busiest per capita systems in the United States. And we've got to make a change. We've got to stop taking people to the hospital and to the emergency room every day. And that's a program where we're trying to outreach and outreach to some of our, if it's an opiate issue, we're trying to outreach to opiate. If it's a situation where somebody needs to be linked to some particular kind of care, transportation. We're also outreach in our, our high utilizers or super users. We just did a, what part of the population health program is they, they on a weekly basis, they're looking at our super user population, our high utilizers. And then from January first through March thirty-one, six people accounted for a hundred and seventy responses, just six people alone. We're trying to get out to those people and find out what is the problem, what can we do? How can we link them with a hospital, a system, a service? We're also outreach in, in future iterations of the program. We're trying to work with the state's new buprenorphine program where we can actually start people on treatment if they want it. So it's a lot of baby steps, we're trying to work our way into the system, but it's had a lot of success.
Right, and look, you know, I fully support the work you're doing, I thank you for it every day. I know it's, it's tough, I see the crews out there just nonstop. I mean, you never see them come back to, to where they park the ambulance because they're just going from one to another. I mean, it's, I don't know how they do that. And, you know, I guess I'm, I didn't know the vacancy level was that high. That is very concerning, I mean, you're talking about a close twenty percent vacancy rate. I'm not clear as to, you know, with additional positions, look, as far as I'm concerned, you would have my support with as many positions as you could physically fill there because I genuinely believe that the, the most important thing that's going with, in any of these operations is saving human life. And, I mean, you guys have the ability to save lives quicker than anybody else in this entire city. And so when it comes to the homicides and you see some of the response time for some of those cases, I know about some in my district where there's been a really long response time. And I'm not, I'm not blaming the EMS personnel for that because I know that they're not sitting around doing nothing. But there is a significant amount of lives that would be saved. The homicide rate would be significantly lower than it is right now. There would be significantly less deaths in this city if you could get to people within those, those golden minutes. And, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm curious from, to hear from you how you plan to fill that many positions. What needs to happen in order to fill those positions and then these new ones you're talking about? I don't know how you're going to fill them, so what, what are you guys doing to do that?
So, Councilman, we're actually proactively trying to come up with incentives to retain our current paramedics. Also, working with several educational institutions to possibly get some type of accreditation as well as paramedic training, so that way our EMTs can upgrade to paramedic. Also, just recruitment, recruitment incentives to get paramedics to come to the city. It's, it's no secret, we have a huge workload and one of the highest, one of the biggest on the East Coast. And neighbors there starting to face the same shortage far as paramedics leaving for other jurisdictions for, I mean, real more money and less work. So that's, that's the problem we have, just trying to keep our folks here and just have them motivated to stay. One of the things that we have noticed in speaking with some of the members that leave, they're just unhappy, they're not getting off on time. So we're working with our staffing program to ensure that these members are relieved on time. And hopefully, with the increase in EMS staffing, we currently backfill with members from fire suppression to the medics. And a lot of times, they're going from one side of town to the other, which takes time during rush hour. So with the increase, increase in recruitment, hopefully upload, upgrading some EMTs to higher certifications. That should help out and also stop the bleed in a sense far as our EMS providers leaving the city.
All right, I'm going to save my follow-up questions for the next round, but I do think that perhaps there are some ways to maybe engage with the medical community to find a way to get folks that may not be certified as paramedics and other certifications that are needed to perform certain functions, that we look at the situation we're in right now and we be real about it and say, look, although you're not a paramedic, we're going to either give you a crash course and get you there or still allow you to perform those functions because, I mean, it's a matter of life and death and, and your folks out there every single day are facing that. And so I'd rather, if I was in a situation, I would rather whoever was there, if they knew how to perform the function that needed to be done, I don't really care what their qualifications are. I care whether or not that's going to happen as opposed to not getting that, that treatment at all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the budget book, it looks like there was an allocation of four hundred and fifty-six thousand for fifteen high school paid internships and ten cadet positions. And as you all are aware, that was an ordinance passed with the City Council to try and expand opportunities for young people in Baltimore City and also over time grow capacity for the fire department. Can you provide us an update on where we are in, in hitting that number?
Yes, sir. So regards to our high school mentorship program, latest, we are, of course, you know, youth ages sixteen to twenty-one. We'll train and assist the life skills, volunteerism, mentorship. And we're doing a, we're coordinating a joint effort between us and BPD and other city agencies to kind of cast a wider net. Currently, we have twenty-five youth signed up, as you saw. We have, again, I mentioned earlier, we have ten mentors, our members who have volunteered to help with this program. They will be paired up with, with the mentor while they're in the program, that would be the mentees. And the mentors, they'll be responsible for meeting with the youth, providing mentorship and meeting with their guidance counselor during the school year. The youth will be required to maintain a C grade average, C grade average along with their regular school attendance and limited discipline record while in the program. During the summer, they'll receive a wage, so they'll actually get paid from us. School year, they have a stipend based on certain requirements they need to meet during the school year. Again, that's C grade average and attendance. BCFD, we're currently, we're attending any community event, career fair, whatever we come across, we're showing up to, again, just pass, cast a wide net, try to get people more interested in the fire service and possibly looking at this as a career. Fire, fire is given out to be bottom public schools, so hopefully that'll get circulated. One thing we're doing, we have, we start our recruitment this Thursday, the next recruitment drive. And one thing we've done as opposed to back in twenty-twenty, we kind of moved the recruitment up to June. That way, we can get those seniors that are graduating high school a chance to apply versus several years ago when the process was done while they're still enrolled in school. And then the big plus, which was also a problem, ten, ten of the schools, they're going to have an opportunity, ten of the students, they're going to have an opportunity to obtain their driver's license. One thing with the hiring for the past couple of years is students, they have their diploma, but they don't have a driver's license. And to become a member of the fire department, you have to have a driver's license. So we're actually going to work on a program to get members, get out, get the youth their driver's license as well.
So just, I was a little confused, so you, you have twenty-five youth or you are just starting to recruit for the program this month?
So according to, we have twenty-five signed up.
You have twenty-five signed up already?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I misunderstood. And can you, I know that there are already existing programs in two of the high schools. Is there a conversation about expanding recruitment into more than, more than the two that I know that the traditionally the fire department is focused on for this initiative?
So, so this year, we're expanding, going to military installations, catch those members that are separating from the service who might be concerned about where they're going to work when they get out. I myself had that concern. Luckily for me, I had already been through the application process prior to going into the military. So that was, I was actually lucky with, in that aspect. But there are those members who are separating from military service who really don't know what they're going to do. And the hopes with that is we have those individuals who have a, pretty much a rigid, a rigid lifestyle. They have that mentality of a military mind. They have that mentality of a military mindset and situational awareness and all that. So we're going to see, reaching out to Fort Meade. In the past, we've gone to weekend drills to catch members on, during their weekend drill duty. Reaching out to the colleges, again, colleges, high school fairs, nursing program, graduations, just, we're, we're out there.
Got it, okay. The, the other question I had for this round, and this was pertaining to the work that we do, as many of you know, I chair the Human Trafficking Collaborative in Baltimore City. Fire Department has been a great partner in that work and I do want to praise Lieutenant Colleen, Colleen Law for her amazing work in leading the training. And would also note that, you know, that partnership has expanded into a great relationship with Mercy Hospital and their Blue Dot Program. They were actually just recognized by the White House for national best practices. And so I just want to thank you all for leading on that work and becoming a national leader in partnership with us. With, with all of that being said, however, I think the work, and you've done such a great job, has there been consideration for creating a pin within the department to focus entirely on human trafficking and domestic violence? I mean, because my understanding is that Lieutenant Law does this as sort of, project is probably not the right word because she's really into it, but it's not something that's like solely that, that, that position is dedicated to this work. And given the capacity that you all have in, you know, interacting with folks who are human trafficking victims, domestic violent victims on a regular basis, it, it feels almost as if the conversation does need to be had about locking in a position to focus on that because one, we know Baltimore City is perpetually in the top 10 of cities that have victims of human trafficking and domestic violence. And you all are on the front lines in that first sort of line of care into the medical and healthcare system. So has there been conversation about making that role a permanent role within the department? And if so, if not, can that be something that be discussed internally and reported out to the council on, on that?
Okay, so if I'm not mistaken, Lieutenant Law does speak on domestic violence as well, correct? So she'll bring in, we'll rotate units and she'll train them. This was probably about a year and a half ago where she actually took, went out to the battalions and had the battalions come in and she trained them on domestic violence, how to recognize it and, as well as the human trafficking aspect. And some units have actually encountered these situations and passed that up. So, but we could definitely make that part of our regular training regimen.
Well, it's not so much the, the training, I'm glad she's doing it. My concern is without there being a position created, if she were to retire, go to a different department, you sort of had that loss of capacity within the department. And you all are doing it, I mean, it's not just a few people that have been identified. There's a lot of folks from the conversations I've had with, with the hospital systems that are being identified as victims by EMS and fire members. And so my concern is that, you know, with one person that's sort of doing it as like a part of their job, but not their job, that, that potential loss could be very impactful for the city of Baltimore. And so just thinking through, you don't have to have an answer right here for me, but just something I'd like to come back to at some point about making that position a actual position or actual pin within the department because I think it's, it's critical and you do, you're doing critical work.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Zee Cohen, First District, Councilman Conway, then Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And before I begin with my first question, I just, I want to thank you guys for the work you guys do. And it's incredibly hard work on the EMS side, on the fire side, and your work keeps, keeps us all safe. And I just want to let you guys know that we do appreciate you. My first question is with regard to a hearing that we held a, a couple of months ago about the status of our apparatus and our equipment. And these are trucks and otherwise that, you know, EMTs, firefighters and otherwise are using to get around town. We noticed that we had significant shortages and had trouble getting vehicles. I know we, we allocated some money to get that addressed. Can you tell me a little bit about where we are in that process and?
Yes, sir. So the money that was allocated for us to purchase five ladder trucks to make up for five trucks that we did not turn in several years ago. We currently have possession of three of those ladder trucks with the remaining two that'll be released in the near future. The departments that we purchased them from, they'll release them once they get their new apparatus. So we're looking at, hopefully within the next month or two, we've received those two additional ladders. In case some of you are wondering if you've seen a yellow hook and ladder fire truck riding around the city, that is one of the ones we purchased. We would have loved to have shrink wrapped it or painted it, but the cost just wasn't, just wasn't cost effective. So you've probably seen Big Bird riding around town, so that is ours. Again, with the shortages on our vehicles, repairs, parts, you know, we're still dealing with that backlog. As far as ordering apparatus, we've actually, the one manufacturer we've gotten many of them from, they've changed the, I guess, the operation at their Florida location to where they can actually produce a pumper in about 12 months as opposed to the 36 to 48 months that they've been pushing out the past year or two. So we're looking, we've already made the request for purchasing two new pumpers, which should come in within the, what, next summer? Okay, about next spring. So that's two, that's two additional pumpers.
Is this in addition to the five?
Yes, it's, so this is, so these are new, these will be new builds. So we're looking at four ladder trucks by next winter and approximately 10, 10 to 12 new pumpers? 13, 13 new pumpers within a year. And once we get all those new, new vehicles in, that should help us out tremendously. We're still looking at other vehicles we could probably snatch up because that seems to be the mode that a lot of departments are doing. Pittsburgh just last week purchased a 1998 pumper for a couple hundred thousand dollars. So these volunteer companies, they have good equipment. Now they know the big cities are hurting for equipment, so they're holding on to it and they're selling it for a good price. And basically, we're just funding them to buy a new fire truck, so.
That, that's really helpful to know. In this budget, have we accounted for any of those apparatus needs?
I believe so. Chief Case, the, is our logistics, he will speak more so on the logistics side of that purchase.
Good evening, Christopher Case, Assistant Chief of Community Risk Reduction and Support Services. We haven't gotten exactly what we're going to get in the budget this year for, through the master lease through DGS. We're just waiting on that, we're getting ready to go, and then right when the money's released, we're going to order vehicles.
Do we know what we're going to prioritize yet?
Trucks right now, truck companies.
Got it. Okay, thank you. My second question is with regard to actually one of the performance metrics, and that's the percentage of EMS responses within nine minutes. Just noting that that's, it's declined over the last couple of years. So that's on page 136. Our, our target is 90%, where as of 2022 at 52.5%, but we've seen that, that metric slide over the last couple of years. Can you tell me a little bit about what's going on there and what we know about? Your microphone.
Sorry. Basically, the call volume and the hospital wait time. COVID really kicked up our call volume as far as the earlier ones, I guess the, when, when COVID first started, our, our call volume went through the roof as, as was expected with the amount of calls that we were getting. And with that came the increased wait for our units in the ER. Therefore, we're still meeting our requirements of having a unit on scene within the time standard. It's just that with the hospital wait times, our medic units are being held up in the hospital. So that means our apparatus, our trucks and engines are sitting on scene waiting for a medic to come transport their patient. And depending on type, type of case it is, sometimes they'll just transport in a fire truck or sometimes the patient will just get tired of waiting and just call an Uber or just go on a personal vehicle and just leave the scene, so.
Got it. Because what I'm, in my mind, sort of thinking of, the staffing piece, the hiring piece, the apparatus piece, making sure that we get as many trucks out there as possible. Then the at, at hospital times, just noting all those different pressures on our ability to respond to these things more, more quickly. I'm curious what other pieces we're thinking about from a budgetary perspective to address particularly this issue. And this goes back to, I think, the issue that my colleague made with our ability to respond to some of these shootings, and it could be the difference between life or death simply a couple of minutes. So I just, you know, just noting, I'm aware of it and, you know, a little concerned about that and whatever we can do to make sure we're, we're supporting you in, in that way. I want to make sure we do that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. We've also been joined by Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, and also been joined by City Administrator Faith Leach. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. You had mentioned, and it was mentioned earlier about the Stricker Report. One of the aspects in the report was making sure there was the correct information in the CAD about the quality of the house. Has that been happening? Have you been getting the data from DHCD?
Yes, ma'am. So we have a data sharing program where whenever they enter an address into their system, it comes into, comes over to us and vice versa. When we go out and do safety sweeps, code X-ray, code X-ray sweeps, that, that information is uploaded to them as well. And when, so when we're dispatched to a, to an incident, if that location is identified as a code X-ray, the dispatcher will announce it during the dispatch. The modal data terminal that we have in the apparatus, it's going to flash red on that, on the screen to notify those companies, hey, this is a code X-ray location. The, once the units arrive on location, if they have an updated, if they have an updated address, say for instance, we get an address of North Duke Lynn and West North Avenue, the pro, the dispatchers will have a program that they can go either direction, 100 feet in either direction or the length of that block to identify what, what code X-rays are identified in that area and relay that to the incident commander. So that way those units don't have to wait until they start operations to find out whether or not this is an unsafe vacant.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the, the data sharing had started to, to happen in a more detailed manner so that when the approach is happening, you already have all the data, what's going on. And of course, DHCD is doing much better about getting the most dangerous vacancies down. So that helps as well. So at least that aspect is, is moving on. Of course, you know, we're still, we've still got to continue to do our part in addressing the vacants, but at least you're being able to approach them a little bit better. So that's good news. My second question is about the Fire Marshal's Office. You had mentioned earlier about reforms that you're thinking about for the permit process. I think we spoke at a previous hearing about the fact that we do have businesses and also others that are applying for permits. And while we want to have our firefighters safe as they approach something, we also want to make sure that the fire suppression systems are up to par. So I, I get the scrutiny that you have to have on these permits, but sometimes it takes forever. And so what is, what are some of the things that you're thinking about in terms of, I think that the one hearing we talked about, you only had two plan reviewers, so hopefully you have more plan reviewers soon. But also in terms of recommendations for the business in terms of how they go about, you know, putting their fire, and the coordination between DHCD and the Fire Marshal because sometimes DHCD says something, the Fire Marshal says something else, and that can be an expensive problem.
So thank you, ma'am, for that question. So to, to supplement the two planners that we do have, we're going to add an additional two planners we're going to detail to the office to kind of help with that backlog. We also have a battalion chief detail to that office to review the, I guess, to get caught up on the MPIA requests, the permits coming in. So we're trying to streamline it as best possible as well as enhance the numbers during the permit process, process. Far as planning with DHCD, we're going to have to just have a sit down between our shop and DHCD and just see other ways that we can further enhance the interact, the interactions between our agencies. So that way we don't have the, well, it's sitting over here. No, we sent it over there. So I think we definitely need to have a sit down and just make sure we're both on the same sheet to make sure that our business partners are getting the permits and everything that they need to make their business run.
So it sounds like your, first, what you're doing is doubling the number of, of permit review planners so that there's, you know, more people looking at all of these, which is good. And then you've got some other folks to supplement some of the work that you have to do there. And yeah, that, I think it makes sense as DHCD is redoing and thinking about their permit process that the Fire Marshal has to be included in that. So I look forward to hearing back from you and DHCD about the progress on that. Hopefully, Mr. Chair, in the next two months, month?
Which one, sir?
Definitely month, I would say be on the safe side, two months, but I'm looking at the month.
Okay, so sometime in June, you'll let us know?
Yes.
Later on in June?
Yes.
Sophia, you got that? June 30? Councilwoman Ramos, can you please repeat the request?
Sure thing. So my request is that DHCD permits and, and the Fire Marshal get together, making sure that there's some more better coordination between the two and that we get a report on what that progress is.
And that's by June 30? Thank you.
I can reserve my other questions for the next round. Thank you.
Councilwoman Porter? Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the good people of the Fire Department and EMS as well. Appreciate the work that you do. To just briefly reiterate my colleague's point, I do think that we have a huge bottleneck as it relates to the permit review process and this not knock on Chief Ames or anyone in particular, but I think increasing capacity there will be really, really important because it harms many small businesses, certainly in my district and in, and a lot of our districts. Wanted to ask about connectivity with other parts of the city that are working on reducing fatal overdoses. I know that this is a large part of the work that EMS carries responding on the scene when someone is experiencing an overdose. I'm curious if you could just outline advances that we've made in recent months, knowing that our city, you know, like many cities, continues to really, really struggle with the overdose crisis and that, you know, we, we have a network of treatment centers, we have peer navigators in our libraries, we have EMS, we have the crisis response team. But it still can feel, I think, a bit disconnected at times. So could you talk about the work of preventing deaths through fatal overdoses?
Sure. First of all, good evening. We do quite a bit with outreach with regard to our opiate overdoses. Believe it or not, Baltimore City is a model for the rest of the state with the Leave Behind program alone. Since the inception of the program, we've left over 2,500 kits or 5,000 doses of naloxone behind. It's a lot easier to treat somebody that's going through withdrawal versus not breathing. So it's one good So it's one good start. The other additions that we have, if a, a patient wants to be entered into some treatment, we have the options of the stabilization center. We also have the option of reaching out to peer-to-peer, which is a partnership with the Health Department. And then also, the new Population Health Initiative. What we're doing right now is we're, we're using brown paper bags to put Leave-Behind Kits, some services, some cards that are, that way there's no stigma, they don't know what you're leaving behind with them. And then finally, on the horizon, and it's a little ways out, we're looking at the, the new program through MEMS, our licensing agency. We're actually going to look at starting the buprenorphine to be able to actually start treatment if, if a patient wants to go there. Along with that, we're continuing to partner with our Health Department and other city agencies to try to outreach.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat the part about buprenorphine and where that would be administered?
It would be administered through the Population Health Group that we're standing up right now. It's a new program. It's only right now approved, I believe, in Frederick. There's a lot of little boxes we have to check to be able to get that. You have to get some specialized training. Dr. Lawner has to agree to it, but it's on the horizon. So we're, we're starting to outreach. Once we get the buprenorphine on, onboard, we're going to have those members targeting to be able to go out and treat people with the buprenorphine.
So you all would be able to support prescribing it, or just, how do you understand?
It's, it's either a pill or like a, a small film you put under the tongue and it dissolves. But there's a lot of different things. We have to evaluate the patient. They have to meet certain criteria of withdrawal, but if they meet that and they, they follow one of the parameters of the program, we can actually start them on the treatment with that.
Got it.
It's a little ways out, though, Councilman.
Got it. Yeah, I mean, I, I know that with Suboxone or buprenorphine or any of these treatments that has to be consistent and regular follow-up and, you know, a one-time deal, unlike Narcan, which can prevent an overdose on the scene, you know, these need to be preventive and continued use, but very curious about that program. And again, appreciate the work that you all are doing, knowing that, you know, we lose nearly three times as many people to overdoses in this city as we do to homicides. And because of shame and stigma, we often don't talk about it, but I think we need to, and I think preventing overdose deaths needs to be a big part of how we all think about our budget and our values. And so, again, appreciate the work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you. Chief, how much ARPA money did the department request?
We did not request because we did not qualify.
You didn't request because you didn't qualify?
We did not qualify.
Wow.
Sir, can we have the CFO come up? CFO? Yeah, you can come grab a seat, or you can stand up there, whichever's working. No, can't do it from there. You can sit down up here, or you can stand up there. Those are, those are the only two options right now.
Can you hear me?
No, you can, you can sit. You can have your own chair, or you can stand. Appreciate the, the urge to be efficient.
That's not necessarily true. Now you can hear me. Okay. So the ARPA funds that we would have applied for back when Chief Ford was here during COVID, we didn't get funded for, so. But right now, I don't believe there are any options for us currently for ARPA funds.
So, so back then, you did, you did ask for funding for certain things?
Yes.
Okay. And how much, how much were you asking for?
I don't believe I recall exactly how much it was, but, and what the programs were for, they mainly were for doing, funding for support services.
Gotcha, so you don't?
For positions for like, for my office, for instance, things like that.
Okay, I mean, because like BPD got money for vehicles and seems like just about everybody else got money for something, but the Fire Department that needs a lot of new equipment and supplies, and who was on the front lines of COVID, responding to all those calls, you guys are getting zero ARPA dollars?
No, we, we did get funding from the federal government for responses and for supplies for COVID, but not through ARPA.
Wow. Okay. That's very surprising, that $641 million and zero went to the Fire Department. All right, let me get to my other question. How much does it cost for every EMS call, when you average it out?
Yeah, I'm going to have to just double-check on the number. It's, it's, it runs between $1,500 and $1,800 per response, but to give you an exact number, I have to look at our takeoff. That's part of the supplemental payment program process, and it varies from year to year. Basically, what they do is they take all of our overhead, all the buildings, fuel, equipment, monitors, personnel expenses, and then they divide it out by the number of runs and they come up with a cost.
Sure.
So it runs roughly between $1,500 and $1,800.
Gotcha. And so from that same calculation, do you know like a ballpark of what we recover from either people's insurance or federal government, like you mentioned about that, and just other, I mean, I assume you bill, you bill people when they, when they call 911 and get transported, correct?
Correct, sir. We, we use Digitech. It's actually the largest billing company in the United States. They do really substantial services like Houston, Texas, Atlanta. We've been very successful with them. We just signed a multi-year contract with them. They actually took us, back in the early days in 2012 when we started this, we were only generating roughly $90 per billable response. They have us up over $210, $215 now. We generate roughly $20 million in EMS revenue from EMS billing. Eighty, 85% of that is Medicare and Medicaid combined. The other additional funding is the supplemental payment program. The way that works is they, like, once again, they figure out how much it costs for a response, use $1,500 as just an easy number. Back when they first started the program, we could get, we were paid $100 per response, and that left a balance of $1,400, using net math. Through ESPP, we're allowed to bill for the federal share, or 50%, or $700 times the number of Medicaid runs we have a year. We average between 38,000 to 42,000 Medicaid per year.
So is it accurate, based on just those round numbers, that $1,500 per call, you're recovering a few hundred, you're losing about $1,200, it's costing about $1,200 per call that we're not recovering?
Seven hundred, day and the day. Seven hundred for those type of responses.
Well, not those I'm talking about in general, we're taking the full EMS response and how much you're averaging. I mean, obviously, your costs are factored based on, on how you elaborated on that, but then on the revenues end would be divided based on the same calculation. And so what would you say you're losing across the board on average per call?
Twelve hundred is a pretty fair, between $1,000 and $1,200 per response. The numbers vary on what you're paid based on what the insurance type is, but that, that's a fair estimate.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Chief, can you talk about what the status of the Key Highway Boat Repair Facility is? Is it currently being used by fire? It's on the 1,400 block of Key Highway on the north side on the water.
So right now, we currently, we're currently using that as a staging area, staging slash storage area for our special operation units. We have vehicles in there, we have our Zodiacs stored in there, and we also have supplies from COVID, COVID supplies stored there as well. So it's basically a, a storage warehouse for us, in a sense.
Are there alternative facilities that could serve that purpose for the things stored there?
Well, the special operations units, they're pretty much based off of Ford Avenue, at the Ford Avenue Firehouse, as you know. And basically, Fire Station was getting crowded. We're also in the process of, once repairs are made, we're going to put a elevated platform truck in the station with the special operation units. That way, they'll have a vehicle that can serve their purpose, special operation calls. That way, they don't have to rely on our tower at Old Town to supplement them on certain special ops calls. Far as the COVID supplies, we're in the process of moving them elsewhere, but for right now, while we still have purpose of the building, we're utilizing it with special operations, the equipment, storage.
So is there a long-term plan for that site? And specifically, do we have any intention of releasing it to put it out to RFP?
Chief Case?
Right now, we, we have been talking to real estate about that, but there's no finalized plans right now.
Just real estate or Baltimore Development Corporation as well?
I have not talked to Baltimore Development, but I've talked to people in the real estate office.
You've been in touch directly with the real estate folks?
Yes, sir.
Got it. I'll circle back on that. Thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just, curiosity, so Service 612 talks about fire investigation, and it, I was just wondering, what is the, the reason, the number of fires where the fire cause was identified is somewhere usually, over the last few years, about one in every two? What are the conditions that create that, you know, such a low number of sort of determinations of, positive determinations of what caused the fire, and how does that fit in the context of the national average?
All right, so I'm going to have my, the Fire Marshal answer that question. Chief Ames?
In order to have a cause, you have to be more than 51% sure of what the cause is. You have to have the medical examiner's information, all the, all the, everything has to be in. Then once you get all the information, you have to have a 51% ratio. And a lot of the fire damage that we have is a total gut of that building or whatever. We can't really have a, a cause. And we have, we have some really bad fires in the city, so that's about the national average, actually.
Okay. That makes sense. I get that. Thank you. My, my second was a, a follow-up to, not, not related to fire investigation, thank you, was related to Councilman Cohen's questioning around overdoses. Are we able to track overdose calls by address? And so if there's a, a particular address or location that has numerous calls for overdoses, are you able to track and identify that? And we're asking because we've, my office has received a few calls about repeat overdoses in a few neighborhoods, and I'm happy to talk offline about those locations where, and most of them, actually, all of the calls have been in some sort of group or congregate living facility. And so just trying to see if there's, how that information shows up when you're in, and if there's, you're repeatedly coming time after time. There's one address I can think of where one of my community association presidents, right on her block, there's a, a group living facility there, and she, according to her, there's somebody there at least every week, or EMS or fires responding every week to an overdose. Could be an exaggeration, but I, I know personally, I've been in that block a few times for other reasons, and definitely have seen repeatedly there being EMS personnel at this one particular house. Do you all track that? And if you sort of see where that trend or pattern is emerging, what are some of the next steps that occur in those, in those situations?
So we currently track, currently track calls once that, once the information is put in to the system. And for those repeat calls, we go out, Chief Matz, we pass our literature, just follow-up with the Health Department. One thing we're doing now, we're tracking them in five parts of the city, and just tracking those calls. We have the exact locations. Of course, sometimes you might find them in the alley, you might find them in a car. Chief Matz, you can span further.
Sure. So it's a fine line with, first of all, we do track that. We track it every day. Daily, it's reported. We share with our partners and Health Department. As you see, the Health Department alerts. We also share with PD if they look for patterns with that as well. Monthly, we report out to open Baltimore. We report out the number of people that respond in R can, naloxone administration, and the number of Leave-Behind Kits. But you've got to remember, when you start getting into the HIPAA realm, we have to de-identify a lot of this stuff. So we, we usually do it by zip code. That way, it's not, it's broad enough that I don't know that I'm coming to so-and-so an address. The addresses are there, it's geolocated, but for reporting purposes, we tend to de-identify for the HIPAA protection.
Now, that, well, that makes sense, but a lot of, and I, I get that. I'm not saying you should publish this information, and I absolutely understand why you wouldn't. My, my concern is that a lot of, in the instances that I'm describing where these are group living facilities, they typically also probably have a conditional use permit that was issued by the zoning administrator, zoning administrator, which should, in my opinion, be sort of conditional, aside from like meeting the, the sort of zoning code criteria, health and safety is also something that should be a consideration. And so perhaps there's a conversation we can have offline about better coordinating or reporting that information to the zoning administrator. I'm not sure like where you sort of hit the wall on like federal guidelines and what the administrator could do, but in a perfect world, I'd hope that like a facility that you guys have been to once a week or several times in a month that has this conditional use should have that revoked, or that, you know, or maybe that information's going to the State Health Department to look at the certification of that operator. Just sort of thinking through like, what are some ways that we can better protect people who may be in situations? And I, just to add context, we had one situation where the, we firmly believed that the staff was actually providing the drugs or allowing drug dealers to come into the facility and sell to the folks who were in recovery, and that was contributing to the, to perpetual overdoses. And so I would hate for that information to sort of just sit in the Fire Department, get reported to the Health, but ultimately, these operators aren't being held accountable. And so just something that we can, we can think through.
Sure, but we're always looking to collaborate and make things a little smoother and more efficient. More than happy to collaborate with that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll save a rest for next round.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a quick question about the consolidation of the mobile integrated program. Why was it consolidated to, to create the 911, oh, sorry, to create the 911 nurse triage program?
So, you're, two different things. So when we did our first iteration of mobile integrated healthcare, it was primarily targeted in one area of the city. It was strictly in West Baltimore and certain catchment areas. Due to the way the grant funding came through from the Health Service Cost Review Commission, we had to stay within those parameters of university's catchment. We couldn't go to Harbor Hospitals or to like St. Agnes and take patients what historically go to them. So with the parameters of that program, what we did is we were targeting two basic kinds of patients in those areas, and that was a treat and release. They call it modern definitive care now. But essentially, a community paramedic was with an advanced level provider, like a nurse practitioner or a doctor. They would self-deploy within those boundaries and treat a patient free of charge. Most of those were like strains, you know, upset stomach, things like that, lower acuity, and they would treat them. The second type was the program where we did a transitional from the hospital to home to help reduce use of 911 and readmission. We got very little benefit from the departmental side from the transitional care. The hospitals actually realized more benefit from that. We took what we learned from those programs, and we're rolling it out because we're not reaching out to East Baltimore, we're not reaching out to North Baltimore, Northwest Baltimore. So the, the idea with this program with the population health was to be able to not only address those two things, but to open a whole wide variety of different services that are out there and to open them up to the whole city.
Okay, because I was going off the, I think this is Service 609, and it's talking about the consolidation of current mobile health integrative programs that serve the city of Baltimore, and I knew that University of Maryland had one specifically at that site. And so you're saying that this would allow much more, a much broader catchment area?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're also still working and partnering with University of Maryland at the same time. The nurse triage, I, I've said it before, there's no magic bullet that's going to help us decant or take the pressure off the system. Nurse triage is where we get people ahead of time when they call 911. You know, going out and treating people on the street is another piece of that. Getting people out of the hospital in an efficient manner is another piece of that. You know, there's all these different little pieces, and we're trying to attack from different angles. Nurse, you know, our dispatch determinants, can we alter the way we respond to reduce the wear and tear on the vehicles? Where we've looked at calls over many, many years, maybe this type of call doesn't need a fire response, maybe it's strictly an EMS response, it could be a low acuity. So we're doing a lot of work, a lot of data-driven decision-making to be able to look at a lot of these things. In that process, we made a lot of real-time dashboards that are really making it, so we're making informed decisions and not just doing things because we think.
No, I appreciate that. And to that point, do we have a status update about the reimbursable codes for community health workers? I know at a previous hearing, we were talking, we were talking about having some sort of funding model within the Fire Department that has a reimbursable option for community health workers to kind of triage some of those low-acuity calls that you all are getting.
So I'm going to have to get back to you- So I'm gonna have to get back to you on the actual code. I know there's a lot of discussion, especially through Medicaid and Medicare locally, that they're changing a lot of those. Maryland Medicaid is very slow. They're kind of like baby steps until we get there. They're just starting to pay for us to go to alternative destinations like the stabilization center or urgent care. We're hoping to get additional codes and additional payment models going down the road. Treat and Release is one of those programs we're looking at as well. Community health workers, we just got approved for those positions. Once we get there, we're gonna, we're trying to take a soft start and try to add different programs as we go.
Yeah, and the only reason why I say that is because other states are, they've been utilizing that model for about two to three years now. And that's an additional funding mechanism within the Centers of Medicaid and Medicare Services for those reimbursable codes. So, thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna take back the questions to some more operational stuff. I noticed in the budget that we're gonna be increasing sworn overtime by 1.8 million. Really curious how we're thinking about balancing that with some of the hiring and recruitment efforts, noting that our overtime money doesn't go nearly as far as a full-time staffer. So can you talk to me about what we're doing there to make sure that balances out?
Okay, thank you, sir. So again, we are starting our recruitment process. We currently have five academy classes going on for a total of 63 recruits. So we plan, so we currently have those recruits in the works. Also, starting with the recruit process this Thursday, looking at a written exam this July, third week of July, and physical starting shortly after that. So we're hopefully starting recruit classes this October, November at the earliest. This is one of the quickest turnarounds we've done in a while. So again, we're just planning on just recruit as many as we can, get them through the process. We're in the process of securing more trailers to house those students on the academy ground so that way we can have those classes going at one time. And just try to just catch up on the members that are retiring. We're looking at maybe one, maybe two more retirement surgeons within the next year. So hopefully, through attrition, we can get those recruit numbers up so that way we can get the staffing back out in the field.
With regard to retirements and attrition of the, of our sworn folks, how many folks are we losing on average per year?
It depends. We just had a, we just had a group of retirees in April of officers that pretty much left after the, how can I put it? The benefit period of the current MOU, contract negotiations. So a lot of our retirees are based off of that. Those members attaining a certain amount of time to where their pensions are pretty much benefiting from that extra time. Also, we have young members. Younger members are leaving at a rate of possibly maybe five a month. They're just not interested like they used to. They'll come do a couple of years and they'll go to another department. Again, they'll go somewhere else, make more money and work less. Some people nowadays, they're just not interested. They just want to go do something different. We had one member who just wanted to go work for Amazon, you know? So it's just the mindset of today's employees. They're, how can I put it? It's just, public safety is just not that go-to-for-longevity-career-type person. It's just the mindset of employees today, they just, just kind of go with what goes on, what flows through their mind right then and there.
I would, maybe I'll make this a formal request. I would love to know for the past, let's say, five years, sworn folks in and out per year? If we have it broken down by type of sworn position, that'd be great. And then anything that we have by way of studies, surveys of outgoing folks so that we can tell what's really going on or why people are leaving, I would love to know that. And if there's anything that we can do as a city, whether, you know, it's investing in some of our infrastructure or, I don't know, having parties, I don't know what it is. But if there are things that we can do to be more innovative, to keep folks here, to incentivize them to stay longer, whether salaries or making the job just a little bit easier, I think goes a long way. Because every time someone leaves, it makes it hard for everyone else. The other question I had was more of a broad question, and this should be an easy one for you. I had a fire death in my district a few months ago. There's a woman living in a vacant house. And she died. I'm really curious about what we as a city and especially we as council members can do to reduce fire deaths and how we should be thinking about that. And it should be an easy one.
Okay. Well, thank you for that question. I remember that fire. And so we're in the process of a campaign. The slogan's gonna be, "Prevention is our intention." We're working with DOT to possibly put those slogans on the charm city circulators and hopefully expanding that to MTA buses. Just met with the state fire marshal. We're actually, they're going with a collaboration of all departments in the state to do a statewide fire safety initiative. We also partner with Red Cross. Red Cross wants to be a part of their, they're already a huge partner. They provide the smoke alarms that we install. So Red Cross is actually stepping up, working with us for fire prevention as well. So we have some things in the works. Again, we just have, just brought on board our new Director of Communications. And so we're looking at reaching out to social media platforms, media, and just getting our message out there.
Yeah, I'm really curious, I think, for us as council members, anything that we can echo or things that we can do or should do to further get ahead of that curve. I know one of the things I had an opportunity to do with one of the crews was to install fire alarms in folks' homes. Anything we can do. Certainly, we don't want to lose anybody to a fire. And I feel like a lot of times, these things are preventable, especially with a fire alarm in your home or a smoke alarm. But yeah, thank you.
Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staying along the same line of questioning as my colleague in terms of sort of getting the word out about prevention of, not only what do you do in a case of, you know, what's your emergency plan to get out, you know, have a fire alarm? But also prevention in terms of like, don't grill on your patio when you've got a thing on the top, you know? Don't have a bunch of stuff on your porch. Particularly, I'm very sensitive to this, given the fires that happened in my district, where the fire spread along the porch line. I just feel like we need to have a much more robust messaging. And to the councilman's point, you know, to utilize us as partners in that. But I don't see in the budget any increase of money for like marketing, for advertising, all of that. Have you thought through that? I know that you've now got a new communications person. So what does that actually look like? Because I'm getting a lot of questions about, you know, how can we do a better job of, you know, getting the message out about what people should and shouldn't be doing in order to even prevent this from happening?
Thank you, madam. So basically, again, like I said, we've gone in an immediate, cost-effective way. Again, social media platforms, working with DOT, they're a city partner. So the thought is, hopefully, we can get those billboards printed out by DOT sign shop as well and get them circulated throughout the city. And once we have utilized our resources, then we can look at cost, I guess, reaching out for funding to get the message out. But right now, it's just a matter of getting it out. And the social media aspect, the, just putting it on city vehicles. We're actually in the process of getting slogans made up for our apparatus, put on our apparatus. So that way, look at a fire truck, you'll see prevention is the intention. So I know we're just looking at ways of getting the message out. So we would have to definitely look into a dedicated funding source for enhancing what we already have.
Yeah, you know, let's brainstorm on that too, because I think that is super important as well. But I did see on your community outreach that you're just going to city and BOPA events. Rather, aren't you going to be going out to all different kinds of events, even if it's not city and BOPA?
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am. So whenever we get requests to have our apparatus show up, we show up. And a lot of times, if there's an event in the community that unit, if there, a lot of times, I go to the firehouse themselves, the organizers say, hey, we want you all to show up. And they'll sometimes pass it on to the organizer how to request it formally, or sometimes they'll just show up.
Yeah, no, that did happen this weekend in one of my communities. And the firefighters love it because when they get there and the kids are climbing all over the truck, then there's another firefighter that has to be the judge for the cake-eating contest. It's a horrible job. And so they, so that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about awareness, like if you're tabling for an event with the apparatus or you've got community outreach staff that's actually like handing out literature about what to do and what not to do. I mean, it's fine to have the kids on the apparatus and that's super fun. But the point here is to try to figure out what's the best way to get the message out about, you know, what you should and shouldn't be doing. So there's, you know, festivals where there could be the fire engine, but then also, or just community relations staff that are not associated with apparatus that are out there, you know, working on that. I know that the emergency OEM does that sometimes with their preparedness work. So it's just a matter of like just getting the word out again about just, you know, don't grill on your porch, you know, don't, you know, that kind of stuff. Have free smoke alarms, all of that. So that's part of that community outreach as well. So I'm hoping that, so the measure here just needs to be changed also because it just says city and BOPA-related events. It needs to be, you know, all events that you're asked to go to for that particular piece.
Yes, ma'am. I totally 100% agree with you on that. And again, I mentioned earlier that we have Director Cartwright on board with us as well as Chief White. He was our initial community risk reduction spokesperson, so to speak. So we're looking at revamping what we had over the past couple of years and just expanding on that and really get us out in the community. Community risk reduction came out about 10 years ago as a new way of saying fire prevention and community outreach. So we definitely want to make sure the department is proactive in that area and again, try to prevent things from happening and hopefully instill some common sense in adults. But you know how that goes.
Kevin Cartwright, I'm the new onboard Director of Communications. And in my role going forward, I certainly have ideas that I'm sharing with Chief Stewart to simply roll out a robust publicity and marketing campaign surrounding, you know, our mission of, you know, protecting the community and property and lives as well. And as a part of that, will certainly involve collaborating with all the local media stations as well as sharing some ideas for marketing to get out tangible, whether it's pamphlets, brochures, whether it's billboards, commercials, things of that nature, and collaborating with some corporate entities where, who have the tangible resources that can aid us in being able to get out our messages along with a lot of the folks in many of our communities.
Well, I know that we would all look forward to working with you on that and getting the word out in our respective channels as well. So thank you for that. My second question is for 911. The same question that I asked last year, which is how many people speak Spanish at 911? Good evening. Push the button, push the button.
Okay, there you go.
There you go.
Good evening, Council President, Members of the Chair. Currently, we have two people in 911 that speaks Spanish. However, that do not hinder us from taking 911 calls because since 2020, we started out with a product, well, a software that allows us to do the multi-language text messages. We can, we're able to text in 168 languages. So we can send it out in English and it'll translate to their native language. And they can text back now in their native language to, and it translates to English to us. And as Chief Stewart said earlier, we're getting ready to roll out the AI feature within the next couple of months. So we'll be able to speak in English, but it will translate in their native language through the AI portion. So even though we do have two, it does not hinder us at all from taking 911 calls.
I must have missed the AI piece when I stepped out. I apologize. So, but I'd have heard of this multilingual texting that seems to be working really well, apparently. So what happens there, then, you know, somebody rather than calling 911, they text 911 and they get a response back?
Yes. So it's the, it's the same way as if you was to do a text message, you were actually in your setting, well, not in your settings, but in your text message, you will dial, you will punch in the numbers 911. And when you send the text to 911, we will send you back an automated response. And then you let us know what's your emergency, your address, and we go forward with that. But the message is, "Call if you can, text if you can't." Because of the information that we actually give over the 911 line, it's too much to actually text back and forth with because of the protocol that we use, which is the emergency medical and emergency fire protocol that is giving life-saving instructions. We don't want to give those instructions via text message because they're very important. So like we tell the citizen, "Call if you can, text if you can't."
Great. Well, this is a vast improvement from last year, so I'm grateful for that. And look forward to continuing to monitor the situation as well. And then I don't want you to have to repeat the AI piece, but I can get more information on that later. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Cohen?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the team that's here. Sticking with the 911 question, there's kind of, there seems to be some muddle in terms of who folks should call in various situations between 311 and 911. And I know that sometimes, you know, the line can be unclear, but I was hoping that you all could publicly clarify. For example, in the case where someone is witnessing what appears to be an overdose or a behavioral or mental health crisis, who should they call?
So for those type of situations, they are what we call emergency situations. If you need any type of medical instructions or any type of life-saving instructions, it's obvious that you should dial 911. So when it comes down to anything that's involving low-acuity calls, you would dial 311. And when I say that, that means as if I came home and my porch front windshield is stolen. I do not have complaint, I did not see the suspect. I just came home and I noticed it was done. That's more of a 311 call. If you're looking for assistance in the city as far as like your BGE bill, food assistance, that's 211. We do have pamphlets that we do pass out throughout the community that actually has the 211, 311, and 911 initiative that we started several years ago, probably like a good two, three years ago. And I've dropped them off at several different locations, whether it was churches, businesses, community events, for people to know. We do have some available if you need some to pass out to your community. But we do push for that initiative. As far as behavioral crisis incidents, you do call 911 for that because we have started collaborations since 2001 with BCRI, which is now the local 988, where we are able to, based off of the way they give us, the information they give us, we can connect them to that third-party organization to help them with the behavioral crisis. crisis. They'll either, they'll have a clinician on site, um, that talks to them on the phone, or they'll actually send someone out there to see where's that person is, to check their wellbeing and, um, everything with that. And then, um, also depending on the information that we get, we also partner with Baltimore City Police Department as well, and they will actually send their crisis response team out to help with the behavioral crisis calls. So it's several different things in place. We have partnered with other resources, like I said, between the 211, 311, and the 988 collaboration to help, um, like cut down on some of the calls that we feel as though they are not emergency or emergency but does not need police or fire department response.
No, really appreciate that comprehensive overview. So before the point where someone needs medical assistance, so we're not quite at a, what could be fatally overdose, but someone is acting strangely, uh, that's 988 versus 911? Can you kind of just break down for me, and again, I know there's some muddle here, but I, I think residents have asked me a bunch in various scenarios who they should be calling, and I think it's important to understand the distinction.
Sorry about that, not a problem. So the residents do have an option on their own to dial 988 because it is a Maryland-based number. Everyone in Maryland has the ability to call 988 at this point, which started July of last year. So if you have a family member that you feel like that has this having a mental crisis, you can bypass 911 and you can actually dial 988. And what you would do, if you're in the Baltimore city area, meaning Baltimore city, Baltimore county, you will get our local 988 number, which is, um, Baltimore Crisis Response, along with possibly another, um, agency that will help, but they're all under the 988 umbrella. However, if someone, the first, you know, first response to most people problem is, hey, he's not acting right, let me call 911. So we put that program in place, like I said, to keep police and fire from going out there to those type of emergencies that they're really not trained to handle. Um, so they can call 988, and that's for the ones who are not quote unquote acting right or does not seem to be right or has been in depressed mode for so long. And based off of the information that we receive, meaning that if they do not have any weapons, if they haven't taken anything to harm themselves, and they're just casually having thoughts at that moment, we will connect them into 988 and a clinician will talk to them.
I appreciate that. Um, and I am curious, you know, the last year, the council, um, pushed to add money to BCRI, and we're really proud to advance some more funds in that direction, and I think it's an incredibly important service. Where I have some concern, though, is I don't know that many folks in the public know about 988. And we know that 911, uh, during busy call times gets jammed up and that we end up with an overloaded system. Uh, and so we'll hear from constituents, you know, I was on the phone for seven, eight minutes waiting to get connected to someone, whereas if we could have more folks using the 988, using, in, in many cases, 311 or even 211, uh, it would save the 911 operators from having to take calls that, to your very well-articulated summation, are not necessarily 911 calls. So what are we doing to push 988 out there and push the other systems out there? Because I think that, um, there, there's a choke point in the 911 system where folks, you know, we've been all taught that if you see something, say something, and that has historically meant calling 911. And I know that for this administration and certainly this council, there's been a focus on non-emergency services going to the non-emergency line, but I'm not sure there's been a commensurate communications push to the public. And so I'm curious how we are addressing that issue.
Um, you, you actually, you expressed a lot of good points. And because of, this is the time of the year where our call volume is getting ready to spike because of weather change and, you know, more people are out in the city. So that's one thing that we're trying to do is actually push more of that information out to the public. Um, you're asking me, what do we do? Like I said, whenever we're out in the community, doing community events, actually speaking at community association meeting, we're pushing out there the third-party resources that we have, 988, 311, 211. What I can ask you to do as well, since you do know about it and you do have general knowledge, you can let those people know in your community exactly what these resources are also, 988, 311, 211, which will also offset the call volume, the call spikes that we will have for some of these calls that come in through the system.
I appreciate that. And again, you know, as we're thinking about ways to really keep our law enforcement focused on the crime fight and keep, you know, fire and EMS focused on what they need to do, I think that effectively messaging the different services and how folks can access them is really important. And so, you know, I would ask for the administration to consider doing a real comms campaign, communications campaign around getting this information out there because I still think that most Baltimoreans do not know about 988 or BCRI or, uh, many, many of the services that we are starting to offer. And I think it's important and would save, uh, police and fire and EMS, um, and emergency services from having to deal with a lot of calls that are not emergencies.
Thank you. That would be very helpful, um, to everyone in the 911 community at this point. And I probably would say EMS and fire would say the same thing. That is very important. If you was to get together a PDA to let the citizens know exactly what's out there for them, because they want to know, they need to know. And I think it's time for them to actually know what's out there for them.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this question is actually for the CAO, I see you in the background. Um, so if you don't mind stepping up, I was curious if we had any updates on the timeline for, uh, for the new fire chief?
Thank you for that question. Uh, we're in the final round of interviews, so we will know very soon.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all. Uh, and then, um, the, my, my final question is, I've been working for some time now on an effort to electrify the fleet. Uh, one of the major issues that came up in the course of that discussion was the difficulty of finding, uh, electric vehicles that meet the needs of the fire department. I'm curious, in your research, I know we're trying to find trucks literally anywhere we can, uh, if anything has come up to help us understand, uh, the capacity of electric vehicles to meet the needs of the fire department or anything to that order?
Actually, I believe, uh, we had members go out to DC last week. Uh, they're actually making electrical fire trucks. There's one in Los Angeles City. Um, haven't heard the reviews yet because they think they just put it in service approximately, probably like a half a year ago. Um, there's another department that has a more conventional, uh, pumper that is electric as well, that they just rolled that out as well, um, probably in the last month. Um, far as the overall fleet, our fire prevention, looking at, uh, hybrid vehicles for, um, for their upgrade, as well as, uh, I believe, looking at five electric vehicles come on to our fleet. So these, these will be just regular vehicles.
Light duty trucks.
Yeah. So, but, um, as far as the apparatus, I think, uh, I think we'll see how it plays out with the, uh, electric, um, electric apparatus, because, uh...
Sure. I, I appreciate the complexity of, of the problem and the unique need that you guys have. And so, um, I encourage you guys to stay in touch, and I'm really curious what comes out of LA or in DC as well. We can just drive down there and see how it's going. But, um, yeah, I'm just really curious about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Councilman Burnett?
So, referencing, um, Service 611, page 142, uh, I see that the target percentage of complaints for fire code violations investigated within five business days is set to 80%. Uh, can you speak to the number of violations that are issued annually and what is the fight, the, the follow-up process following, following a violation?
Okay, so, um, as far as the actual number, um, I would have to, I'll get back to you with that one, um, because we have, um, not only our inspectors issuing, um, violations, uh, unit officers, um, writing up violations while they're on calls. Um, that could be they go to a call for an emergency, um, EMS call and turn out to find padlocked doors or something. So they will write up a separate violation or sometimes just a regular building violation. So, uh, that's going to be a vast number. As far as follow-up, um, a lot of times the company officer can follow up within two weeks to make sure that the, um, items have been abated. And if not, then they'll be followed up to the fire marshal's office, and then an inspector will get involved to come out to, um, make sure that, uh, abatement takes place. So, um, I can, um, again, I can get those totals for you and, uh, submit back to you once we get the, um, actual number.
Okay. Um, the other question I had, um, was more of a, I guess it's more of a, I don't know if it goes to finance, um, but in the Service 600, page 122, um, there's a pretty significant increase over the last few years for just admin costs, uh, from 7.8 million to 13.1 million, but there's not necessarily a significant increase in positions under that category. Can you speak to why that cost almost doubled in the last four years?
Okay, so, uh, so I'll have, uh, Assistant Chief of Safety Member Services, uh, speak on that, um, him and the fiscal officer, so...
Thank you for the question. Um, our Chief Financial Officer, Jim Fisher, can better, give a better explanation on that one because the administration is, we just have picked up a lot of additional things that we've had to take on, um, data that we've been asked or requested that we need to submit, and, um, it's just a lot of data gathering that we need to do for certain reports that we need to do. Got you?
The one thing that I do want to point out is that that's where we have put historically unallocated funding for grants. So that has increased. So that may look like an increase. We put it unallocated there because in, since COVID, we've been getting a lot more funding. But with that funding comes a lot of other responsibility. So there are some things, along with the new administration, also some positions in administration, um, for equity and, and items like that that we've had to create, um, the contractual items. And then there's some data, um, our IT is also in there. So for communications to replace radios and things along that line. So there hasn't been a lot of increases in that area. We've requested some increases for support staff, some of which we have gotten, some of which we haven't gotten, increases through ESPP funding, things along that line.
I think, um...
Councilman, Councilman Burnett, can I just add one item there, too? Um, one thing I'll note is that the fiscal 22, we're looking at, we're comparing the fiscal 22 actual to the fiscal 23 and 24 budgeted amounts. If we look at the fiscal 22 budget, it was about $10.1 million. Um, so really that it, you know, it's gone from a budget of, of 10.1 in fiscal 22 to a budget of 11.1 in fiscal 24. I would say the, the reason for the, um, uh, the, the surplus that we've seen in, in fiscal 22, that would probably partially be driven by vacant, what we saw in the vacancy side.
Okay. I, I think for, um, I think it'd be helpful to sort of break out, especially like the IT equipment stuff, um, instead of putting that in that, because a lot of the other agencies do sort of lay out where their sort of infrastructure capital costs are, and then personnel a little bit separate, so it's easier for us to differentiate because just looking at it looks like, I don't know, at, when I think of admin, I just think of staffing, so I wouldn't have really intuitively thought to think through some of the other stuff, but I get it. I just think moving forward, it'd be helpful to break that out.
For sure. And we can collaborate to provide that follow-up.
Okay, thank you. Um, and my, my last question, Mr. Chair, um, the, and this is just a fire suppression question. Um, the number of, um, on-scene responses that require sort of a coordinated resource with city partners is, is particularly low, is that based, I guess, what triggers sort of that multi-agency response to an incident versus just fire EMS?
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Councilman. So, the, for the most part, the only time we would get other city agencies involved is if we call for OEM to assist with a, um, say, a, um, large-scale evacuation of a high-rise building or we'll call DPW in case we have a water leak or something, um, to that nature. Uh, most recently, we've partnered, again, we've partnered with American Red Cross, they are pretty much taking on the job of assisting occupants when we have fire, uh, fires. So they're taking, um, pretty much supplementing our neighborhood services. So we don't call for neighborhood services anymore. We really don't call for OEM unless it's a large-scale incident such as the, um, steam incident we just had on Mother's Day downtown. So, um, a lot of times, if it's beyond our scope, then we'll call for assistance. And depending on what agencies we'll need, we'll also put in that call to OEM. And OEM kind of plays that switchboard operator for us.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, colleagues. Any other questions for fire? Um, I have two final questions. Oh, Councilwoman Porter, first.
Thank you. I did have one question, and you just jogged a question in my brain. What is the official notification, um, for those types of events to, not only to the council's office, but also to the community?
Good question. Um, again, if OEMs notified, they'll do the, um, I guess, the, the alert messaging. Um, far as us notifying the councilperson, um, PIO, um, aide to the chief, whoever had the contact numbers, they'll reach out to the council, let them know of an incident in their area, and, um, just make sure that happens so that way you all are aware that something's going on in your, in respective districts.
Is there a level of severity of incident where you notify the community? So for instance, we had a minor chemical spill, um, in Hawkins Point, some of the community did not know about it, some of them did. I noticed that it was a notification system through the Maryland Department of the Environment and not through OEM. So who's, who's on deck to notify the community?
Okay, so, good question. Um, was not aware of that. So that would be, um, I would definitely say on ours, on us, because a lot of times, um, MDE will get the call after we've arrived on scene. So for them to send the message out, that's something we're definitely, um, we'll have to look into and see what was dropped on our end. But if, um, again, OEM, please, um, switchboard operator for us, um, as far as, um, large-scale messaging out to the community, and that is definitely something that, um, I will follow up on as far as that incident.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, can I make that an official request, please?
Absolutely, you can, Councilwoman. Uh, Nate, Sophia, you guys got that? Excellent. Thank you. Standard notification procedure?
Yes, standard notification procedures for community members, council's office, and any, um, any kind of, uh, integration with state-level agencies as well, like Maryland Department of the Environment.
Great. That's something you can get to us by Friday? Is that reasonable?
Oh, I would actually, can I extend it out a little bit, if possible?
Sure.
Yeah, so I'll give you a month, but I'm looking at high expectations.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, any other questions? Two last things for me, and then we're out of here. Uh, first, forgive me if we already covered this, but on the fleet issue, can someone explain to me, uh, we just have one fireboat, or do we have multiple?
So we have one main fireboat, a large fireboat, uh, Thomas Fraser, and we also have two rescue boats that pretty much supplement the, um, the big boat.
Are those in need of capital repairs, or are they, where are they at in their lifecycle?
Um, I believe we are, they are up for repair, I mean, for replacement. So, um, I'll have Chief Case speak on that because we have been actually going through that process of trying to, um, secure funding for replacement.
Yes, sir. Um, both the little boats, uh, the smaller boats are in need of repair and they're going through that right now. And the larger boat is going to... they're going through that right now. And the larger boat is going to dry dock soon, which is a major repair for it. We have requested $10 million for a new fire boat, a new large boat from the state, and it didn't go through this budget cycle. We are in the process of purchasing one of the smaller boats to replace that. And then probably within the next year, we're also going to ask for funding for another small boat.
Okay, so we have two small boats that are currently being repaired?
Yes. Well, they're, they're in service, but they're getting, they're getting repairs needed.
Got it. So we have two small boats in service that are getting, in the process of getting needed repairs?
Yes.
We have one large boat, which is being taken to.
It's going to be taken to dry dock.
Kind of sounded like the farm for old dogs, but.
It's a, it's, it's, they take it out of the water and do major repairs. It happens every few years.
And while that's in dry dock, we're going to purchase a smaller boat while we wait on the state funding, hopefully to purchase a new larger boat?
We're exploring any funding we can possibly get for, it's going to be significant capital purchase, at least $10 million.
Got it. But while it's in dry dock, are we purchasing another small boat or we're just exploring that?
No, we're, the other two boats will fill in for the large boat.
Okay. So they're interchangeable? Forgive me, I'm not familiar totally.
They don't, they're not as large and they don't pump as much water, but with the two of them together, usually there's only one in service, the large boat and one of the small boats.
So two small equals one big?
So the two small will be.
Got it. Got it. Perfect. Chief, can you, Chief Case, can you make yourself available to meet with me on this Friday at 2:00 PM with the real estate officer to discuss the key highway property?
Yes, sir.
If you could please come to City Hall and I'll make sure I coordinate with the comptroller's office.
All right.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you all very much for your attendance and participation tonight. Especially want to thank the men and women of the fire department who put their lives on the lines every day. Kevin, it is fantastic to see you back in city government. Very lucky to have you. And Sean Eames is one of the most incredible public servants I've ever had the opportunity to work with. You are very lucky to have him in your department. Commander, well, now Chief Eames, thank you for everything you do every day. Appreciate it. We're now in recess.